To order, welcome to, welcome to the City of Montebello Planning Commission. Today is January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Can we, can we get roll call, please?
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. Chair Cuevas?
Present.
Commissioner Morales? Commissioner Lamelli?
Present.
Commissioner Valdez?
Present.
Commissioner Medina?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if I can get everyone to please stand and face the flag. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public comments. Can I have somebody read that, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. At this time, the general public may address the Planning Commission on any items listed on the agenda for tonight's meeting, including items that are not listed on the agenda that are within the Planning Commission's subject matter jurisdiction. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from acting or entertaining extended discussion on a topic not listed on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Please be aware that the maximum time allotted for members of the public to speak shall not exceed three minutes per person. And please show courtesy to others and direct all comments to the Commission Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is staff communication.
Yes, Mr. Chair. We had planned for our city manager to attend tonight's meeting and introduce himself. But unfortunately, he had an unexpected commitment and he will be unable to attend. But he did commit to attending the next meeting. So that's all to report. Thank you.
Next time, thank you. Okay, moving right along. Public hearing, item number two. Number two, but it's the first item on the.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're numbered accordingly. So item two is a request from Montebello Plymouth Congressional Church to modify conditional use permit number two dash sixty-four. And this would be to establish a surface parking lot at an existing vacant lot located at one forty-one South Tenth Street. And Grace Hayashi will provide a presentation on this item. Thank you.
Before we move on, I feel like the mics need some adjustment. Do we have to maybe move them back further? From our.
Yeah.
From my mouth? Is that better? Or, or is this better? The audience, show of hands, which was better, number one, number two? Number one, okay. So this, the way I'm doing it now, is that okay? Okay, perfect, thank you. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Okay. Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission and the public. The item before you is a request to allow for a modification to an existing conditional use permit two sixty-four for Montebello Plymouth Congressional Church to establish a surface parking lot at an existing vacant lot located at one forty-one South Tenth Street, providing supplemental parking for the existing church located at one forty-nine South Tenth Street, and to establish ingress and egress from the church to the public right-of-way and construct a driveway to access the new surface parking lot. The applicant is also requesting other minor improvements such as replacing non-conforming accessible parking and ramps on the vacant lot at the church site. The project site is located near the intersection of West Los Angeles Avenue and South Tenth Street within the R-three multifamily residential zone. The MPCC owns three separate parcels as outlined in the red aerial before you. The parcel with the star icon is the project site and it's currently a vacant lot. The total combined lot area of the church and the vacant lot is thirty. An assembly hall are located at one forty-nine South Tenth Street, located on the same parcel with a building area of eight thousand three hundred seventy-two square feet and a lot area of thirty thousand three hundred sixty-one square feet. The vacant lot at one forty-one South Tenth Street has a lot area of seven thousand and three square feet. The property located at one thirty-seven South Tenth Street is also owned by the church and is designated for the parsonage, which is not a part of the project. There's no change to any of the existing buildings. The project site is Zoned R-three multifamily residential, surrounded by other multifamily residentially zoned properties to the north, east, south, and west. The immediate surrounding land uses are residential, which is consistent with the residential designated land use and will not have an adverse impact on adjacent or abutting properties. The slide before you is the existing site plan. The property highlighted in red is the project site where the new surface lot is being proposed. The site is currently undeveloped and owned by the church. And currently, the project is going through an administrative review concurrently with the discretionary application via a waiver and release agreement. The slide before you is the proposed site plan of the parking lot improvements. Highlighted in red is the vacant lot located at one forty-one South Tenth Street, which will serve as supplemental parking for the adjacent church located at one forty-nine South Tenth Street. Here, they're proposing eight new parking spots with two ADA spots, three new ADA compliant ramps, as well as a new concrete driveway and curb cutout. They're also relocating the apron to provide ingress and egress to the new parking lot. The planting area on the parking site will be one thousand two hundred twenty square feet. Highlighted in green is the existing parking lot. Minimal improvements are being proposed to the existing parking lot, which will include restriping one accessible van stall, totaling three ADA compliant stalls for the entire church, and painting a new sidewalk from the accessible parking lot to the new sidewalk for safer accessibility around the church. Throughout all parcels, the project is proposing to repave four thousand eight hundred seventy-five square feet, including both new asphalt and concrete. Overall, the project will provide three fully compliant accessible parking stalls, including one van stall, a ramp from accessible parking to the front door, and a path of travel to the public right-of-way. The project site currently provides forty-six parking spaces. And with the proposed improvements, the project will be providing fifty-four parking spaces total. And this will meet the parking requirements for churches per chapter seventeen fifty-two fifty, off-street parking. The proposed project is considered a project per the California Environmental Quality Act. And the project is categorically exempt from CEQA per class eleven of section one five-three-one-one related to accessory structures. On November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, the public hearing notice was mailed to owners within the three-hundred-foot radius and on the same day was published in the Daily Journal, Whittier Daily News. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution number twenty-one twenty-three, approving a modification to conditional use permit two sixty-four with conditions and is categorically exempt per section one five-three-one-one relating to accessory structures. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions as well as the applicant.
Thank you. Any questions for staff from the Commissioners? Don't have any. I'll open up the public hearing to allow the applicant to come up and address the Commissioners if they choose to. And just ask you to introduce yourself for the record.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commissioners. My name is Wesley Okamoto, and I'll step back here. And I'm the architect. And also, I've been attending the church for well over twenty years with my family. So I have a pretty good idea of the campus and also the project. I'm joined today with the Reverend Mitchell Young, who's our pastor. And if you have any questions, we're here to answer any technical or operational questions for the evening.
Thank you. If the pastor doesn't want to speak, it's fine. But if you choose to, that's okay also. I'm not sure if any of the Commissioners have any questions for the applicant.
Yeah, I have a quick clarifying question. The, the property adjacent is, you mentioned was also, is also owned by the church?
That's correct. It's the parsonage where the pastor and his family live. And that's not a part, it's not a part of this project, though. It's.
And, and just so we're clear, what's the use of that, of that parcel?
It's a house, it's a single-family residence.
A parsonage is. A parsonage is a house designated for the parson or the minister to live in.
Okay.
So that's where my family lives.
Gotcha.
Typically, and maybe this is more appropriate for, for staff when it comes to single-family dwelling that's adjoining a parking lot. Maybe because this house is associated with the property and the church. There. Some kind of fence wall to divide the two properties with the use and the traffic and noise and, you know, lighting that could be something that could affect the adjoining property. If that property, if that house stays connected and is used in conjunction with the church, it's probably not a problem because the pastor would be busy with the business of the church. But if that ever becomes a problem or the separation of the pastor no longer living in the house, I'm, I'm not sure if that's been addressed or covered under this consideration.
Yes, part of the administrative review, they're putting in a six-foot vinyl fence. So that'll be reviewed administratively.
Oh, just a vinyl, vinyl fence?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you. I don't, it looks like we don't have any more questions for you, so thank you. Since we have the public hearing open, if anyone in the, in attendance wishes to come up and voice their opinion in either opposition or in support of the project, please come forward. It looks like none. If not, then we'll close the public hearing and we'll bring it back to the Commissioners for discussion and consideration. Commissioners, any discussion? If there's, oh, Commissioner Lamelli?
I don't have any questions or concerns, just a motion.
Okay, before you do that, I just want to state that this is probably something good for that area. I know that having a church that has attendance of churchgoers probably has an effect on the neighborhood. So increasing the parking onsite and taking those vehicles off the street would probably be a good benefit to the community in that area. So I would imagine that there would be support for that. So thank you, thank you.
And I would like to make a motion to approve conditional use permit number, case number PC twenty-twenty-three dash zero-zero-one-four dash CUP dash M-one with recommendations one and two.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Looks like we have a motion and a second.
I will take roll call. Chair Cuevas?
Aye.
Commissioner Lamelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Medina?
Aye.
Commissioner Valdez?
Aye.
That item is approved, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the second item is number three on the public hearing section.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner's item three relates to a request to demolish an existing car wash located at one-one-three North Garfield Avenue and construct a new two-story express car wash and car polisher pursuant to the proposed conditional use permit before you today. Daniel Ruiz will be presenting on this item. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission and the public. Tonight, I will be presenting case number PC twenty-twenty-three dash zero-zero-three dash CUP for a conditional use permit application which will allow the applicant, one thirteen North Garfield LLC, to demolish the existing car wash at one thirteen North Garfield and replace the car wash with a new two-story express car wash and car polisher. On May fourth, twenty twenty-three, Michael Paul's Associates, the representative for one thirteen North Garfield Avenue LLC, the applicant, filed a conditional use permit application to demolish the existing car wash at one thirteen North Garfield Avenue, the project site, and construct a new two-story car wash and car polisher. On August second, twenty twenty-three, staff issued a deemed complete letter. The aerial map in this slide shows one thirteen North Garfield Avenue, which for reference is located at the corner of West Whittier Boulevard and North Garfield Avenue. The project area for the proposed conditional use permit is identified by the yellow star and the total combined lot area of the site is thirty-three thousand square feet. The project area is currently developed with the car wash originally built in nineteen seventy-one and approved under CUP ten dash seventy. If this request is approved, the previous CUP entitlement will become null and void and be replaced by the CUP currently proposed by the applicant. For reference, the photos shown here demonstrate the overall layout and configuration of the project site, including the existing car wash. The project rendering shown here demonstrate what the proposed car wash will look like if approved. The first floor of the proposed car wash includes a car wash tunnel, a polished tunnel, an equipment room, a trash enclosure, a break room, and an office space totaling seven thousand three hundred and twenty-nine square feet. A total of six employee parking spaces, including one Americans with Disabilities Act ADA parking space, will be placed on the first floor. The proposed second floor consists of twenty vacuum positions, a vacuum equipment room, an electrical room, a storage room, a restroom, and an office totaling five thousand one hundred and fifty-nine square feet. Combined, the first and second floor of the proposed two-story car wash building will total twelve thousand four hundred and eighty-eight square feet with the maximum height of the structure reaching twenty-seven feet and eight inches. One thirteen North Garfield is Zoned C-two, general commercial, and is surrounded by commercially zoned properties to the north, east, south, and west. Additionally, to the west, there are also residential properties across the alleyway located within the boundaries of unincorporated Los Angeles County with an R-two zoning designation. The immediate surrounding land uses are designated general commercial, which is fully compatible with the proposed car wash use. It is not anticipated that this specific proposal will have an adverse impact on adjacent or abutting properties. The city zoning map further illustrates that the project site is situated adjacent to other commercial uses and developments, which should allow the proposed use to be properly integrated without posing significant impacts on the surrounding land uses and community. Regarding the environmental review, case number PC twenty-twenty-three zero-zero-zero-three dash CUP is considered a project per the California Environmental Quality Act CEQA definition. The project is considered a Class thirty-two categorical exemption under CEQA section fifteen-three thirty-two, which consists of projects characterized as infill development that meet certain criteria. The proposed project meets all of the conditions required to be classified as a Class thirty-two exemption. On November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, the public hearing notice was mailed to owners within the three-hundred-foot radius from the exterior boundaries of the subject property. On November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, the public hearing notice was published in the Daily Journal. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-three, approving the demolition of the existing car wash and allowing the construction of a new two-story car wash with conditions for the property located at one thirteen North Garfield Avenue. Additionally, staff recommends that the Planning Commission determine and find that the project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to CEQA's guideline section fifteen-three thirty-two related to infill development projects. Thank you. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions or comments, and the representative for the project is also available. And I believe they would like to give a short presentation as well.
Thank you, Daniel. Any questions for staff?
Just a point of clarification, Chair. Is this a by right project, right? The, the use is allowed in the C-two zone?
A car wash requires a conditional use permit to operate in the C-two zone.
Gotcha.
And so in this case, there was already an existing CUP that was approved back in nineteen seventy. But in this case, if this new CUP is approved, the, we have conditions in the resolution that would invalidate the previous CUP and make this one binding.
Okay. And you said there was no response from any property owners within the three-hundred-feet, three-hundred-foot radius?
We, we did not receive any response. We did receive two letters of support. I'm not sure if right now would be the time to mention that, but we, we did receive two letters of support for the project via email.
Gotcha. Well, allow members of the audience, if they're here for support or opposition.
Okay.
You indicated that the applicant, applicant's rep is here to address the Commission?
Correct.
You can just state your name for the record, please?
Certainly. Good evening, Chairman Cuevas, members of Montebello Planning Commission. My name is Michael Pauls, and I'm the applicant's representative this evening. To begin my presentation, I'd like to state that this has really been a collaborative effort with city staff. We believe this to have become a better project as a result of some of the input from city staff. That being said, I would like to also specifically thank the case planner, Mr. Daniel Ruiz, for his efforts in bringing this application before you this evening. The applicant, or to begin my presentation, the applicant, Mr. Richard Herturian, who is in the audience this evening, has been a longtime member of the Montebello business community, operating a full-service car wash at the corner of Whittier Boulevard and Garfield Avenue for over thirty years, and, and he has been a hands-on operator. Today, Mr. Herturian is asking to demolish his existing outdated car wash and construct a new state-of-the-art, two-level, environmentally-friendly car wash together with an innovative automotive polishing tunnel, which represents an eight-million-dollar investment. New express car washes today allow for greener, more efficient choices for the car owner, which involve washing, waxing, and vacuuming their vehicles, which is good for the environment by significantly reducing water consumption as well as runoff pollution. The car wash technology, which is being proposed, will recycle over sixty percent of the water, washwater used, excuse me, and allow harmful contaminants such as oils, road grit, brake dust, and other pollutants, which are washed off the vehicle to be disposed of in an environmentally safe manner. Over the last decade, the state of California, and especially Southern California, have experienced periods of drought, which is predicted to continue on a reoccurring basis. And in addition, I'd like to point out that the state of California, as well as the Metropolitan Water District, are poised to restrict water deliveries to California cities in twenty twenty-five, making water-saving uses even more important in terms of local and state efficiency goals. It's important to add that these new, new generation water-saving automatic car washes are currently underrepresented in the surrounding community, with the closest car wash being two-point-one and two-point-six miles from the subject site. Additionally, we'll be hiring twenty full and part-time individuals in the community, prioritizing hiring residents from the city of Montebello and creating part-time employee, employment for students in the community. We're also going to be providing high-definition video cameras, both inside and outside the facility, which are going to monitor the entire facility and be recorded on a DVR system, and we're going to make those images available to law enforcement upon their request. The property will also be completely illuminated in a manner to ensure that no light spills over onto neighboring property, both per conditions. With that being said, I'd like to state for the record, we are in agreement with the conditions of approval. I would like to thank you for this opportunity to, to present to you, and this would end my presentation. And I'd like to make myself available for any questions that you may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the speaker? Okay, members of the audience, if there's anyone that wishes to speak in support or in opposition of this project, please come forward. Looks like we have none. We'll close the public hearing and bring you back to the Commissioners for discussion.
Just, I was hoping to get a little more clarification on who the, the letters were received in support. Do we know, were they the residents? Or business owners?
Yeah, so the two letters of support that we received are from two local residents. I, the applicant representative sent these to me. I can't quite read the names on here, but they, they were two residents that sent them.
Okay. I can see that they're, I mean, in looking at their layout, it looks like they're, a lot of the traffic is being conveyed to the alleys, where before there wasn't any, any traffic. And those alleys are but the, an R-two zone, which is, I mean, the density isn't, isn't too high in an R-two, specifically two, two properties per unit, two homes per unit, per lot. Is there an increase in security lighting on that side of the, of the property or the development? Do we know?
So if I may, related to the, the exits, that, that was a recommendation of our traffic engineer. Our, our traffic engineer recommended that they exit through the alleyway. And, and it's a, he also recommended the implementation of a left turn only, so that that way they, they'll go and exit towards the street. Now, related to the lighting plan, a lighting plan has not been submitted yet, but like the applicant mentioned, that they will be providing sufficient lighting to ensure that it doesn't spill out into any surrounding areas. And that it should provide adequate lighting. Typically, for a lighting plan, that is also reviewed through our police department. And so the, the police department ultimately can chime in and provide any additional comments that they have related to any lighting issues that they see at the property.
Okay. So then, at that point, would, would any potential lighting or increase in lighting impacting the local residents? The R-two zone, is that something that staff will review at that point?
Yeah, like, like I said, the lighting plan will come to us, and then ultimately, if we do have any issues with surrounding property owners, we can always revisit the, the project and bring it back to the Planning Commission for review.
Okay.
And those are good questions to support Commissioner Medina. Maybe, you know, we're following a standard type, you know, process in terms of, you know, traffic or circulation and also lighting and those. Is that maybe a standardized, you know, system in terms of, you know, enforcement that we use? Is that something that can be discussed, or is that?
Well, related to transportation specifically, recently, back in October, our vehicle miles traveled ordinance was brought, brought to the Planning Commission. That was also passed through the, the city council, but that was technically not in place at the time that we received this. But that, that relates to establishing standards for, for all types of development projects in the city. And as a part of that, typically, there's the level of service type of analysis for traffic issue. And so that's still something that we can use to look at specific projects like these. But in this case, our traffic engineer did review it, and he did not have any issues with it. But he should have, he is well, well-versed with these different types of analyses that are provided for traffic, traffic analysis. And ultimately, he didn't have any additional comments aside from what we incorporated within the resolution.
Okay, it looks like some of that was vetted through the process.
Yes, and just to be clear, to add to Daniel's point, is that our, our updated guidelines do allow for level of service to be used when analyzing these types of traffic impacts.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, that definitely helps. I guess one of my concerns is that there's an increase in the traffic volume that will be using that alley that hasn't been seen with the current development. And in looking at, you know, some of these Google images, I can see that the fence heights in, along that, the path of exiting are relatively low in the adjacent property owners. I just, I, I would strongly suggest that we, I don't know, find some way to reduce the net impact on, on that residential zone that abuts the development.
I know for similar projects in the past, the condition has been added that a, a one-year review of the project would be required. We, we could. We we could impose that condition upon this project, and within the one-year mark, we we can definitely review it and see if there have been any issues, and that would be brought before the planning commission for review.
Could it, could it also be that maybe some of the traffic flowing out of the business, there was an intent to keep it out of that major intersection, possibly?
I believe that is one of the factors that was used by the traffic engineer to make the determination that you did before you today, yes.
Yeah, to to further add to that, there, our traffic engineer did add that there will be no queuing along Whittier Boulevard. So the intent there was to keep the the cars off of the main main corridor. And on there, he did add a condition that if it needs to be reviewed or revised, that that we can always bring it back, and we can suggest additional revisions to ensure that there are no additional traffic impacts.
Thank you.
I I see speaker coming up. I I'd have to open the public hearing to allow you to come back up. So if we do need to ask you to come up, we may ask you to. Okay, just give us a minute. A minute, we'll finish, and then we'll, okay, thanks. Any other questions about that?
Well, I had a question. I I can see that they're, it looks like they're providing a landscape buffer on Whittier Boulevard. Looks like there's not a whole lot of an opportunity on on Garfield. But I'm I'm wondering, is there, as part of this conditional use review, will there be a landscape analysis or review?
Yes, the landscape plan must be submitted as a part of the formal plan check, but at at this time, the applicant chose to defer the submittal for the landscaping set of plans until the the formal plan check process.
I see.
Commissioner Medina, I can also allow the the applicant's rep to come up and maybe help you with some questions?
Yeah, most definitely.
We'll open the public hearing again to allow the the owner's rep to come up and address some of the questions that have been raised.
Thank you very much, Chairman Cuevas. We would be more than happy to reach out to the neighbor. The business owner and property owner has a wonderful relationship with his neighbor. He's been there for thirty years. Your point is a good point. We would be more than happy to reach out to those individuals, make improvements as as seen fit, and and so we don't have an issue with that. In terms of lighting, none of the lighting is going to spill over, and none of the lighting is going to have an adverse impact on any of the surrounding properties, including the residential properties across the alleyway. But again, this has been a car wash for thirty years, and and many of the neighbors moved in knowing full well this has been a car wash. I think all of the neighbors actually are our customers, so they're very appreciative of Mr. Herturian, the manner in which he conducts his business. And and we will assure you that there will be no impacts on this surrounding community. That has been an emphasis of this project from the very beginning, and we intend to carry through.
Thank you. All right, we'll close the public hearing again, bring it back to the commissioners for discussions.
Well, it's good to hear that the that the owner has a good relationship with with adjacent property owners. I'm not sure, I think this next question really should be for staff, but I'm wondering if as part of this, the the condition use permit, there will be any any right-of-way improvement? And and I'm more specifically looking to, I can see that they're putting in a new driveway, but is there a requirement for, say, accessibility, to address accessibility with a upgrade on the curb ramps, at least in that corner? I'm I'm not entirely certain how the the review will be done.
If I may, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, so staff circulates these requests to the various departments, Public Works being one of them. And at that time, it would be their opportunity to request these types of upgrades. I see Daniel looking through his proposed conditions from Public Works, so maybe you can shed some light on this.
Yeah, so the only condition that we had related to public improvements, our traffic engineer did include a condition for all existing driveways fronting the site must be replaced with new curb and gutter and sidewalk per city standards. As a part of the city standards, I'm sure that the Public Works Department would incorporate ADA accessibility as a part of that. Separate from that, the the building department, they've also included provisions for ensuring that the site is accessible for individuals with the, under the Americans with Disabilities Act. So typically, under the way, in Montebello, our our building department, our building division is the one that checks for ADA accessibility issues. And so as a part of what they check through the building code, that will make sure that the actual property within the private property is ADA accessible, and then the the improvements outside were requested through through our traffic engineer.
Thank you.
Questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question also concerning the residential. Given that this was previously a one-story structure, and now it's going to be a two-story, are there any recommendations or are there any additions with the staff when it comes to, if there's any issues when it comes to residential, when it comes to privacy? I don't know if, when it comes to like, I don't know, alley, I know there's an alleyway there. I don't know what the standard is for the height when it comes to.
Like the guardrail at the top of the second story?
Exactly.
Oh, okay. I guess, is, and I don't want to speak for you, but are you concerned, like, if someone or whoever's on the second floor overlooking onto the adjoining property?
Yeah, I'm just saying that on behalf of the speaking for the residential, who are used to a one-story, this is not going to be a second, a two-story structure. I'm just, you know, thinking about the residential. I don't know if that would be a issue when it comes to.
Just to comment, there is a twenty-foot separation in between with the alleyway. I don't believe that we included any provisions for privacy, but but like I said, at any given point, if there are any issues, we could always bring it back to the planning commission for consideration.
And if I may, Daniel, what is the height and the height, the maximum height for the C-two zone, as well as what the height is proposed for the project?
Technically, there's only limitation if it's abutting to residential. In this case, it's not technically, abutting would mean it shares a property line with residential. So in in this case, there is no height limitation in the zone. It's based more on the floor area ratio and making sure that the project falls within the FAR.
You have a high-rise building there, technically.
Technically.
Oh, okay. So, okay. Well, did you have a second question? I, and I think those are good, you know, questions and points to be raised. For me, I think the fact that this proposed structure seems to enclose some of the work going on inside a confined area. It, I think it kind of protects the adjoining properties from noise and lighting, and then the second story also, if there's any lighting, it'll go up, not, you know, spreading over to the general property. So it does protect, you know, again, from noise and lighting, so I think it's a good thing in that regard. I mean, but I think some of the other questions that have been raised are good and valid, so those are my comments. We don't have any more comments. I guess we can entertain a motion?
I'm sorry, I just have one 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 more quick comment. In looking at the elevations, it just, I'm wondering, is there, are there conditions in the CUP that also require for the the owner of the project to maintain the facility free of graffiti? It just, I feel like it 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 would create a fairly large canvas for.
What was that last part? You said to maintain?
Free of graffiti.
Graffiti? Typically, we do include that any graffiti must be removed within twenty-four hours.
Okay.
I believe that that should be included in here.
Check, but I believe that is a standard condition that we impose on all new projects.
Yes, condition number eighteen, the property owner shall have all on-site graffiti removed within twenty-four hours of its appearance.
Thank you. We tried. Okay.
I just wanted to add a comment. I'm very excited to see projects like this one come forth that are both aesthetically pleasing and, you know, are environmentally friendly, so thank you for.
Okay, and if we don't have any more questions or comments, I guess, again, we'll go back to entertaining a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve a conditional use permit, case number PC twenty twenty-three dash zero zero three dash CUP, with recommendations one and two.
I'll second that. Can we get roll call, please?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, Chair Cuevas, can we add a condition entered for the the one-year review period?
Oh, yeah. I'll go ahead and recommend that we approve the motion with Commissioner Medina's recommendation of following up with one year.
And I'll second the motion again.
All right.
It is to open up a public hearing twice. It it sounds, it sounds concerning to you, so we'll go ahead and allow it. We'll open public hearing again.
Chairman Cuevas, I appreciate that very much. There's a substantial amount of money involved in the building permits, in ordering equipment very early on, in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, and a one-year review period. We think we have, this has been thoroughly reviewed at this point in time, and we would like to go forward with this. I I mean, essentially, we could be risking a substantial amount of money, and we could be risking the project as a whole. Staff has analyzed the project. We've met on several different occasions with your traffic engineer. We've met on-site with planning. We've had interactions with building and safety. We think this is a complete project. We are certain that it will not have any negative impacts on the surrounding community. And in in terms of exiting in the alleyway, we had discussions in terms of the in in terms of this aspect of the project, there will be no right-hand turns into the alleyway. It will be left-hand turns only. We've worked with your traffic engineer in that regard and followed his recommendations at considerable cost to us in changing the plans and changing the engineering of the project. So if we would humbly ask if if we may be able to go forward with the project without there being a stipulation that there be a one-year review. We we believe this project has been thoroughly reviewed. It has been our intention from the very beginning not to have any any adverse impacts on any of the surrounding community, even those members of the community that lie outside of the city of Montebello across from our project. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you very much for that opportunity to speak.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing again, and and maybe just to clarify what that means, because I think the applicant maybe feels that this is going to be a financial hardship, and maybe his concerns or their concerns can be alleviated, kind of clarifying what that means, if that's okay?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I will definitely. It's not uncommon to have these periodic reviews, if you will. We have other projects that do it, you know, every three months, some every year, and there's a set timeframe. It is, it is, it's very, it's it's an administrative process, basically, that, you know, there's a matrix, the conditions are listed, and it just shows how the compliance is taking place, and that is reported back to the commission. It is a receive-and-file. It is, it is a very straightforward process. I I I don't, I have never seen where a project has been stopped. Usually, we would want to work with the applicant if there's a challenge with the condition and maybe figure out how we can come to a resolution. But in any event, the certificate of occupancy usually isn't issued unless the conditions are are complied with. And if there's conditions where, where, like, where you have graffiti that needs to be removed, you know, obviously, that would be handled through our code enforcement division if it becomes a problem. This would just be merely just reporting back that these conditions have been satisfied and that there have been no issues. That's really all we look for.
Thank you, Director, but also maybe clarify that it would be a review within a year, but not on a yearly basis?
Correct. The, it's at the mercy of the commission, basically, to impose if you want a one-time annual review, if you want to, you know, do it for longer than that, it's, you know, it's at at your discretion. But a one-year annual review would be a one-year, and that's it. Yep, that's right.
Thank you. Okay, hope that clarifies the point with the applicant. And that's all that means, but thank you. Okay, we're. Used here. So we're back to the commission discussion, and we can complete that process of the motion and the voting, I guess. Thank you.
So I have a motion that was amended to include the condition for a one-year compliance review. I will take roll call. Chair Cuevas?
Aye.
Commissioner Lamelli? Commissioner Medina?
Aye.
Commissioner Valdez?
Aye.
Item three is approved with that condition. Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda. It's number four, site plan review.
All right. Commissioners, item four relates to a request from Ford of Montebello. This is for a proposed site plan review to allow the installation of a new seven thousand one hundred and fifty-square-foot pre-manufactured metal warehouse, and this would be used for general storage for the property located at six five two South Maple, and Emily Fernandez will be presenting on this item. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, members of the planning commission, and members of the public. This evening, I will be presenting case number PC twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one seven dash SPR for a site plan review application, which will allow the installation of a new seven thousand one hundred and fifty-square-foot pre-manufactured metal warehouse for general storage of furniture and auto parts for Ford of Montebello at six fifty-two South Maple Avenue. The entitlements associated with this project include the approval of the site plan review with conditions to allow the addition the addition of the seven thousand one hundred and fifty-square-foot warehouse in the M-one light manufacturing zone located at six fifty-two South Maple Avenue. The applicant has submitted a waiver and release form to allow them to submit for administration review with all needed departments concurrently with the review of the planning commission. This project is before you today because the Montebello Municipal Code, section seventeen point seventy-four point zero three zero, states all commercial and industrial projects involving the construction of five thousand square feet or more building area requires a site plan review. The project site is located on a lot on South Maple Avenue between West Mines Avenue and Beet Street. The aerial map before you delineates the subject property in the red. The lot size is ninety-eight thousand six hundred fifty-eight square feet, and the proposed development is seven thousand one hundred and fifty square feet in size. The subject property is currently developed with three existing buildings, resulting in eight thousand six hundred twenty-four square feet. With the addition of the new building, the total area on the lot will be fifteen thousand seven hundred seventy-five square feet. The project is zone M-one light manufacturing. The immediate surrounding land uses north, south, and west of the project site are also light manufacturing, which is consistent with the industrial land use, and the proposed project will not have an adverse impact on these properties. The property located on the east of the property is single-family residential. The metal building will not be visible to the neighborhood, as it will be placed behind a six-foot-tall block wall and one hundred ninety-three feet from the rear property line. The slide before you illustrates the applicant's proposed site plan for the project highlighted in red. The proposed site plan review will allow for the installation of a pre-manufactured metal warehouse. To minimize the effects to the residential units to the east, the applicant will be planting two trees illustrated by the blue circles on the east of the map. Based on the Montebello Municipal Code, the applicant is required to have a minimum of sixteen parking spaces, and the applicant is proposing thirty-two parking spaces. The existing use on the property is a remote inventory lot for storage of Ford of Montebello parts. This slide before you illustrates the applicant's proposed floor plan for the warehouse. The warehouse will have four roll-up doors and two standard doors. The bulk of materials stored at the project site will be body panels, bumpers, and frame parts. Oils and flammable liquids will not be stored on the project site. This slide is the applicant's proposed elevation drawings. The proposed warehouse will be made of ribbed metal siding, a metal roof, and the building will be twenty-four feet in height. No one will be working based off this location. It will be used as overflow parts for Ford of Montebello. Typically, there will be little to no noise during standard business hours. On rare occasions, there will be a forklift on the site to restock the warehouse. The site plan review application is considered a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, and the project is considered Class thirty-two and categorically exempt per section one five three three-two in field development projects. On January fourth, twenty twenty-four, the public hearing notice was mailed to owners within the three- On January 4th, 2024, the public hearing notice was mailed to owners within the 300, 300-foot radius from the exterior boundaries of the property site and on the same day published in the Daily Journal, Whittier Daily News. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution number 2223 approving the site plan review, case number PC 2023-0017-SPR with conditions and is categorically exempt per section 15332, class 32 in field development. Thank you. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions and as is the applicant.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
I have a question. I'm, I'm wondering if, is there, is, are there existing fences along the east turn property line?
Yeah, so there is a six-foot block wall all around the property. And then in the front, it's a six-foot hedge, so it looks like a grass hedge on the, from looking on the, the street, on Mines Avenue.
Thank you.
I have a question. So the height of the zone is not exceeded, setbacks are not exceeded, parking is not an issue. So the only reason they're here is because they're building something that's more than 5,000 square feet?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I, did, did that sound sarcastic?
I, I just want to address that, and I've said this before, but we, we are looking at our code closely and that is, site plan review is one of the things we're looking at and we will be back.
Okay, thank you. I, you know. We're a little strict, but you know, it is what it is, so I'm, I'm glad that, you know, someone's looking at it, so thank you, Director. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? No? We'll open up public hearing, thank you. We'll open up public hearing to allow the applicant's rep or the applicant to come up and address the commission.
Good evening. My name is Robert Plant. I'm with Roar Architects. I've been working with Ford of Montebello for close to 10 years now. The owners own this particular piece of property for over 20 years. It's used basically for new car inventory, miscellaneous additional parts when you buy some of the parts in bulk. The owners recently purchased the parts inventory for Wondery's Ford, which closed down several months ago. He came to me and said, Robert, can you give us a 7,000-square-foot building to put all those parts into? Again, these parts are slow-moving. We don't see any additional traffic at the site. It'll still have the same sleepy character that it's had over the years. Typically, the parts department will have an inventory list of things they want to pick up. They'll drive over in a van, load it up, and then go back. So it might be one, two deliveries a day or pickups to pick up stuff at the store. I have the parts manager here today. I'll have the service manager here. If you'd like to address any operational-type questions, it'd probably be better if you ask them versus I guessing at how that goes on. Any questions for me?
Commissioners, any questions? I don't have any. No. If not, we'll reserve the possibility of asking the parts manager. But maybe that won't be necessary, but thank you for offering that up. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
We'll close the public hearing unless we need to open it up and bring the discussion back to the commissioners. Commissioners, discussion? Questions, comments? So at this time, we can entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and motion to adopt resolution number 23, 22-23 approving the set plan review for PC 2023-0017-SPR.
We have a motion in a second. Can we get a roll call?
Yes, Commissioners. Chair Cuevas?
Aye.
Commissioner Lamelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Medina?
Aye.
Commissioner Valdez?
Aye.
Item four is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the last item, actually second to the last item on the agenda, planning commission orals. Commissioners?
No.
Well, I just want to thank the staff again for all the hard work that you guys do. It's good to be able to count on you guys when we have questions and when we're confused and we're, it seems like we always have questions and I get confused, they, they don't. So thank you for your help. Appreciate it, Director. Alumbia also, thank you.
If I could just make one announcement, I'm not sure, the last meeting we wanted to announce that Monica Mercado Rodriguez had transitioned to another city and we miss her and so we didn't get a chance to update the commission formally. So we just want to let you know that she is now over at the city of Garding Grove, which is three miles from her home. So it is a quality of life issue, so.
Bad for her. What a commute.
Yeah, yeah, all right. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Commissioners, any other comments?
Good. First, first good meeting of the year.
Yes, yes. Thank you all for your feedback and comments. It's a, it's a pleasure working with all of you, so thank you. All right, the, the last item on the agenda is adjournment. We'll adjourn until the next meeting. Thank you all.